That's sixty-five thousand.
Okay, maximum amount of sixty-five thousand, my motion, take it from community to development.
Okay, good. Do you, you accept the modified, or Gary, do you accept the modified motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Doug made the motion, Gary seconded it, to take up to sixty-five thousand dollars, to take sixty-five thousand dollars from the community development fund to pay for the grapple truck. I would ask a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
I've got a question.
Please, Scott, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we need to take that or not. I don't know.
That's where I'm at, too. We need the grapple truck.
But we need a grapple truck. If you let us, if I, if I vote no right now, and this thing dies, if I vote yes, it's still going to die. We don't get a grapple.
I'll make the motion right now.
Well, make a vote, and we've got to be long, Rick.
Yes, yes, I vote yes.
All right, he votes yes.
Okay, Jordan?
No, only because I think this is a better way to do it.
I'm voting no, because I think there is another possibility, taking it from the unreserved funds.
Okay, Laura?
No, I agree with Jordan, there's a better way to do it.
It's a tie vote, is that correct?
I vote no, thank you.
Now, I make a motion that we take to buy the grapple truck from the, one of the funds that we've got here. We don't have to take it out, ARPA. We've got a, what did you say, while ago, clients that we had? The regional fund?
The unreserved fund balance.
To buy the grapple truck.
You can assure us it won't come out of the ARPA fund?
Well, that, that's up to the council. It, that's just a good blanket way to say it, and then if you want to move the funds around later, the council has that ability.
Could you make part of your motion not to use any ARPA funds?
But what if we don't have any of that?
Excuse me.
I can't do that, Doug. But we've got to have a grapple truck.
What's your motion, Rick?
My motion is to buy the grapple truck.
Okay.
Out of the funds everywhere we get it from. I don't care.
All right, there's a motion to buy the grapple truck out of some funds. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? You want to detail it just a fraction?
Maybe we should let Jordan make the motion.
All right, he's got a motion.
Okay, then we'll add the fifty cents to the bill to pay for the grapple truck.
Absolutely, let's do it.
But that's, that's adding a fee.
No, we can't do it, because we've got to have a public hearing.
You can't do it right now. But we could go have a public hearing.
Yeah, add a later date. That'd come at a later date.
Okay.
But it needs to come out of, I mean, I don't know.
The unreserved fund balance.
Unreserved fund balance. There you go.
And not out of ARPA funds?
It's, it's not. You can't add the nots, it's only the yeses, okay?
I mean, if you'll say, I'll vote for your, I'll vote for if you say not out of ARPA funds.
Guys, let me explain.
Not out of ARPA funds.
No.
Okay, that's his.
Do you, I will make your motion the way you want. I'm not crazy about saying not, only the yeses. If it's not in there, it's not in there, only the yeses. Mike, but your motion?
Make your motion again.
You just want to, unreserved funds. That's all you've got to do.
The unreserved funds.
Done, thank you. There's a motion on the floor to purchase the grapple truck using the unreserved funds. Is there a second?
I see.
Gary makes a second.
One quick thing, also, not to exceed sixty-five thousand.
Not to exceed sixty-five thousand. Gary, you second that?
I second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Are we going to explore this fifty cent rate in the future? That's all we care about.
Okay, all right, there's any further discussion? There being no discussion, roll call vote.
Okay, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
I'm going to vote no, but only because we just don't have a solid plan of how to pay for it, but I think Jordan is on the right track.
Okay, so the motion carries five to one. Okay, so we can move forward with the purchase of the grapple truck using unreserved funds. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right, and then we will have, we need a plan on replenishing this money. I would defer to Mike on this. Mike, please.
Yeah, it would be, it's setting a new tax or a fee, so we'll have to find where to put that in the code of ordinances. We have to do a public, public hearing, give them notice, two readings, everything like that. But if that's, council wants me to look into that, get that ready.
Okay, I would suggest, too, Jordan, he's obviously excellent math, but I would suggest that we defer to Ronnie Campbell to clarify the numbers, what we do need, to make sure that fifty cents covers it. Can you do that, Ronnie? Thank you.
Can I clarify?
Can you account for a population as well, like decreasing, increasing?
It's bill that accounts.
Yeah.
That's what you're going by.
Yeah.
Can you clarify, I mean, I think we should go around, I'm not going to ever vote for another increase right now on the fees. Fifty cents or a quarter, because people can't stand it right now, they're up against, like I said, people on eighteen hundred dollars income, fifty cents means a lot to them.
Well, and this is also, you know, kind of relating back to that resolution. This isn't something saying, hey, we're going to approve it, we're going to approve it. If you all are okay with me finding out how to logically do it, and then if it comes down to it and it fails in a vote, then it fails in a vote. You're not locked in to anything.
That's correct, yeah. And, thank you, Mike, and I will, if I'm speaking correctly with the council, I hope I am, we're asking you to research how to do something, and we can vote on it or not, and Ronnie, you can supply the numbers. Jordan's given excellent base, but we depend on you for that. Okay, thank you.
Based on what he said?
Yes.
Based on what he said, it, I have come up with those numbers before, but I will verify it again.
Thank you, and then we can work on that at our next meeting. Thank you so much, members of council.
May we take a ten-minute recess, please?
Yes. Ten-minute recess, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. We're not in the trenches. We're not in the trenches. I can't remember, you're a part of this town.
My husband's going to be walking through Jordan's entrance. Where are you, dear? What are you doing there, Larry?
Sorry, you all are happy to see it, so.
Hey, Jan, thank you, Cisco. They still got the, two, three other times to get to.
Do you know the strapping includes crosswalks? Do you know the strapping includes the crosswalks?
The crosswalks?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we were like, oh, yeah, including all that. I think it's a general idea of what they do.
Hey, you overshot mine.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's also,
Right here. Right here. Don't charge me extra. Send us a G O for massage stick, I mean.
Well, you don't have to have one for me, I'm just like an old cat, I'll lay in your lap and just go for it.
Okay, I'm doing yours.
I'm doing what I want. I'm working for the government. And I'm an expert in production. You pump the gas, I'm moving it. When you bring the water, then when you change the, George actually got coal.
Yes, yes.
You know, just bring the water, then you got leaves, and then when you get one, it's got leaves. Because they can be food.
What you have, you never go back.
I love them.
How many works?
That's what I'm thinking.
That's the goal. When my brother's coming in from like college. So I tried to have.
I can't get away.
Did you ever watch Killigasaw?
All right, I actually can. Yeah, I kept off. Very tough, very, very, very tough loss. Yeah, it's hard, especially.
Gary, where's he outside? Anybody, is Gary still out there, guys?
I hope so.
He's duffus ears, he isn't, he's still here. Okay, we'll wait. Home on the range, where the deer and the antelope play, where seldom is heard a discouraging word. And the skies are not cloudy all day. Just think about it. That's us. Where seldom is heard a discouraging word. Okay. I'm good. Is this yours, Rick?
Yes. I'm just trying to keep so.
I got it. Susan, is Gary out there?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Shall we? Sorry. This meeting of the Richlandstown Council is now back in session. Okay, we have, we're on item, Roman numeral six, item C, Oriole Bridge update. Oriole Street Bridge, go ahead, Clarence.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'll keep it brief, due to the lateness of the hour. The bridge, next steps would be to procure engineering services, to design a replacement bridge, and then also to procure the said replacement that's recommended by those engineering drawings. We'll be working on that as fast as we can go, just remember, we have to follow the procurement code, because the emergency is said to have ended now. So staff is working diligently to get that done, and we'll keep you posted to the process. And we do know that we can use the VDOT Highway Maintenance Funds. It is one of the designated streets, so we can use that. So what we have to do is, we have to look at what our fund balance is now, and then the incoming funds that are coming in for the fiscal year, and then we feel that those funds will probably cover everything, but again, you don't know until you bid it out. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Clarence.
Clarence, can VDOT help us any with any of this?
Not really. They have been really good, Mr. Mayor, about offering technical assistance and making sure that we're okay. If we start having questions when we get into engineering or anything like that, they will answer technical questions. They haven't turned on us. I mean, they have really been a good resource, but they did let us know that it would be the town's responsibility as far as paying for the bridge.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions for Clarence? Okay, financial matters, V R S A grant received, V R S A. Okay. Clarence, you ready for it? Take, Ronnie?
Yes.
Roman numeral six, item D, article one.
D one.
Mm-hmm.
The V R S A grant, we applied for that to purchase six of the A E Ds to share with the various departments. The quote was originally ten thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. We're going to get a grant of four thousand dollars to cover that, then we'll reallocate and appropriate those expenses and the revenue recognition. There's not any other action needed this time. We should receive the grant, I think, in November. But I did want to point out, this was my first grant, and I got it, and it turned around in twenty days, so I thought that was pretty good.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I had on that one.
Perfect. Audit update.
All right, as far as the audit update, we have a draft of the fiscal year 2022 financials in hand. We're still reviewing that. As far as any adjustments for that period, it was just standard closing entries. They didn't come up with anything of concern that would have required an unusual or an adjustment that we weren't aware of. We hope to wrap those up with the auditors in October and have final statements, and at that time, we will get with, share them with council. But given the age of those results, we'll probably, you know, not spend a whole lot of time on it, but we will make sure you guys understand, you know, where we landed. Fiscal year 23, audit statements, we should have those no later than February. And then fiscal year 24, we should be back on schedule with our 180-day loan requirement to have those by December 31st. So gradually, they're going to gradually get us back on track of having financials by the end of December of each year.
Perfect.
I have a question.
Yes, Jan?
Do you have an update on the forensic audit? When they're going to give us another update?
When, yeah, they, we have met with them briefly, and we had some conversations. They were, they had more recommendations than anything, but we still haven't received the final. I think they were also waiting on the 2022 audited statements as well, and then I think they'll wrap up their piece.
Any other questions? Okay, water plant pump bid solicitation?
Okay. This one, this one's not totally new, but E J had a pump last year, or was it? Yeah, last year in October, that they tried to submit some bids for, did not receive any. But it's, it's one of two pumps that they need as far as critical operations. They're using one that's aged quite a bit as well. They wanted to either replace the extra pump or get it repaired, which is, it's still uncertain what the path is on that. We thought we would try to send out bids again and see if we can't make some progress on that and get back with council once we had some, some new, new information.
Thank you, Ronnie. Any questions about that? Okay, monthly financial report?
All right, this is me as well. In my attempt to get you guys more and better information, we included income statements, we did some cash reserve analysis per the financial policies and things of that nature. It's a lot of, it, it, there is some detail in there. You may have seen the statements and other packages before, I'm not sure, but we tried to consolidate into one area. But I think it is important for us to focus on net income and not, just not cash at a point in time, because cash will follow your net income results, because, and, but I'm glad to walk you through some of this, or if you want to take it offline, I can meet with, you know, groups of you at different times. And we, and my hopes is that we can continue to evolve this review and come up with a useful tool for you as well, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, to review the monthly financial results. So this is my first attempt to try to get you guys some better information, more timely information.
I am deeply appreciative that you are offering to meet with us in small groups. It's very difficult when you're sitting up here to look at these financials and, or for me, and get it all, so I think that is a fantastic and most gracious offer. So on behalf of council, I accept, thank you.
Question.
Okay.
Sure.
Can you go back, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing with the financials, but can you go back to, it's a lot easier for me to see how much reserve we've got, like you had it before. It's like, it's a lot easier to say this month, we paid three hundred and seventy-nine thousand out for electricity. We made four hundred and sixty thousand. I mean, for me, those figures jump out at you if they're on, like they used to be.
Yeah, I, I have separate reserve schedules for each department.
Oh, I know, but I mean, on the bills, like we.
Yeah, if you want to see this.
Yeah, I'd like to see on the bills.
Was it the A E P bill you're referring to?
Right, right.
Yeah, because that one always triggers like a timing difference.
On the check register, yeah. I like to see side by side how much we paid versus how much we brought in.
Yeah, we can still do that as well.
I'd like also the reserve of the electric, because we're going to have to keep a careful, a careful watch on the reserves.
Yeah, I mean, Susan and I talked about that, and it was my suggestion to try to put it all in one area. We can still do that as well, but.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
What I like to do is, you know, as we continue to go through this, if you guys keep giving us suggestions, so we can get you some good tools to look at the financial results.
Yeah, sometimes it's just easier. I love what you've done, but it's a lot easier if it jumps out at you on the check register.
Yeah, so with what I have here, you've got summary income statements, which if you look at the month of July, we're, it shows a small loss of about fifty thousand when you tally up all the different departments.
Fifty thousand loss on what?
Net, it's net, net income, expenses versus revenues.
On which department?
It, that's, well, if you want to turn to it, it's about, well, actually, it's a second page in.
You talking about general fund or?
Yeah, on my attachments.
Sure. Okay. No, I'd just like to see it on each department, you know.
So I've got you a summary income statement and the detail of all those amounts, actual to budget for current month and year-to-date follow. You can see, but we're only one month into the year. I remember you asked me, Jordan, when I first saw the first email, I was a little, little hesitant. What, what did I do wrong? Because I had verified the numbers, but anyway, this month, year-to-date and current month are the same, because we're only one month into the year, but you've got revenues, expenses, net income. So I want to make sure you guys.
Yeah.
That would be, I think that would be helpful for you guys to look at as well.
Yeah, I mean, it is helpful, but from my side, expenses vary from month to month, and they're not always the same, but your profit and loss, I mean, if you can put how much we spent out, how much we brought in revenue, that means a lot more to me.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. That's looking at it more from a cash basis. The net income will get you there. It just might be a timing difference of a month or two.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. I would suggest that council members contact Ronnie individually to find a mutually convenient time to meet with him, okay? Council members, you okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, here we go. Schedule public comments, Rocky, please come up.
Can I make a motion?
Uh, no.
Will you make a motion to let Mr. Edgell speak first, or anybody that told him maybe?
Uh, he has, he asked not to be on the agenda, he's removed himself.
Anybody else?
Come, Rocky, you're up, come on.
All right. I believe in respect.
Good.
Rocky Hill, 352 Pounding Mill Branch Road. First of all, I would like to thank the council, mayor, everybody in the town that's worked for the town. I want to thank all the people of the community, and I want to thank all the businesses for making Lake Park what it is. You go by there daily, I'm not exaggerating, there's probably twenty to fifty people there daily at that park. I was informed that there was a bus brought there today from, had state tags on it, had a whole group of people. You know, we talk about, it's for our people, but you talk about boosting your economy, doing things like that. When you get people not driving to Bristol no more, because we build a park for our kids and our seniors, we keep them here, and that's what we want, and we did it. I didn't do it, we did it. So everybody needs to get their hands, clap themselves on the back. All the business in this town, ninety-five percent of all things that was bought came from inside-town limits. I'm talking Richland's Home Supply, Silver Spur, Advanced Auto, sponsors from the Senator. I mean, I could go on and on, the people in this town that gave back. The paint was not bought by a single citizen or a single business. It was bought by every single citizen in this town. To me, that's amazing. You know, I was taught a long time ago, running a billion-dollar operation in the coal mines as superintendent. You can buy new miners, you can buy new boulders, you can buy all the new equipment you want, and you can replace this one, and this, and a that, and this, and that. But your greatest asset is your people, period. This is a business. Your greatest asset in this town is your people, period. Until we learn how to use those people, we're going to fail. I don't know why God picked me. I don't know why businesses reach us money. I don't know why people come to help every Wednesday. I don't have a clue why they picked me, but I know we made something beautiful happen in Lake Park. And that being said, I just thank you for it. Bringing up Brits Park, I've had people stop me in the streets, in Walmart, everywhere. What's your next project? What's your next project, Rock? We've got the whole town behind us right now, and we don't need to let that go. We have the people right now. Want you talking about community planner and all that stuff? Use your people. Get out and get your people, because right now, I've got two businesses. Two businesses, and Ramy's and Giovanni's, and one other business, I don't know the name, but they did give a sealer, wants to not paint or add to Brits Park. They want to refurbish the basketball court with new sealer. They want to, the picnic tables are all warped, they need replaced. You do have to stain everything at Brits Park, it's in a contract. We did get some information about that. But if you've looked at the gazebo, it's a mess. It's awful. Park looks awful. None against the town workers, they're busy, they just now told you, they don't get time to work at town on the parks. We're here to help them up, for free, for free. We're here to help these people for free. And I'm asking you, got one more thing to add about Brits Park. I do want to add one thing, and I know I'm going to be over five minutes, but Lord God, y'all been over five hours, so give me a little more.
Rocky, so you'll know, I gave you seven already, keep going.
I'm picking.
When the bell rings, that's it, done, go.
Anyways, the gazebo. Anyways, the gazebo, if your child is in a wheelchair or your grandma is in a wheelchair or your aunt or anybody, are you going to sit in the gazebo while they sit down in the grass? Because right now you can't get up the steps. So I do want to put a wraparound ADA ramp to where somebody can take their child up in that gazebo with them. It's the only ad I want to do. ADA approved. We know the rules, regulations. We know how to do it. But I'm here to ask you, can I refurbish Lake Park with the help of the town? With the help of Clarence? We've discussed this. Everything would go through Clarence, all approval, everything.
Rocky, you mean Brits Park? You said Lake, you mean Brits Park?
Brits Park.
Yeah, okay. Making sure.
Brits Park. We'll hold off on credit bill. I just want Brits Park because I still got to put a baseball field up too. We're there.
I think it's fantastic what you and so many people have done is wonderful. Applause and hats off. Thank you, Rocky and all the people who contributed and the people in the back who maybe don't have money to give, but they gave in spirit. I would suggest, I'll defer to you, Clarence. What is your protocol for these types of things?
Mr. Mayor, customary practice is if the council wishes to accept the generosity of the volunteers is to authorize the staff, including the town manager and the town attorney, to develop a memorandum of agreement, an MOA that just memorializes the terms and condition. It protects the town in case a volunteer gets injured on the property. And that way we have an idea to know how long the timeframe is going to take. But I would suggest that you allow the.
An MOU? What we call an MOU?
MOU, MOA, yes. Any of those to, just to memorialize exactly what has been requested and agreed upon.
I think we'll need to vote it, council, but I want to say, Mike, can you work with Clarence to develop an MOU that has all the necessary components for the protection of the town, the protection of people who use the park and the protection of Rocky and God's rock stars? Okay? All right. Is there a motion to allow Rocky to move forward with this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor and Gary makes a second. Is there any discussion, understanding there's an MOU involved? All right. Any further discussion? Amanda Rolcall, vote please.
Um, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Rocky, we're behind you. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
You can work with Clarence and Mike and they'll supply you. And Clarence, when, thank you. When the MOU, you're fine. Thank you, Rocky, for your time and your talents and your resources. All right. When that is ready, would you please submit that to the council? We see, we can see what it looks like. That is obviously public. Thank you.
And Clarence, your time's short with us. I mean, I'm not firing you. What I'm saying is.
What are you saying?
What I'm saying is, will you pass this on to whoever who takes your seat, what you're doing with that? So.
Absolutely.
Everything don't get all messed up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. All right. Attorney report, town procurement code. Oh, my bad. I'm just skipping all the citizens. How about my? All right. All right. Unscheduled public comments and we allowed five minutes for this. The first person on here is Mickey Smith. Mickey, come on up, please. And thank you for your patience.
Got it. Well, I gave you a little handout of the list of things that I have concerns about and it's a broken record. My name is Marguerite Smith. Everybody knows me as Mickey. 524 Sycamore Lane, Richlands. Appreciate all the work you all are doing and great minds, I think. You know, I just sit and listen to all your input and I, I, I just awestruck and, and I'm really excited about this revitalization and, you know, as a woman, the word with a re, you know, like rehab, redecorate, re, re, it, it's exciting to me. So I hope you can take this and run with it and I'm, I'm excited about what the prospects are. Like I said, it's a broken record. I know you all have a pavement plan already on, in the working and I've, for years I've brought up East Second Street and Sycamore Lane. You talk about, about four years ago when they did the repaving, I think several streets in, in Dalton Dishing got repaved, but East Second Street and Sycamore Lane was not included. I was told, and it was on the record, that, that, that street just couldn't be done. I don't know how it got paved first time, but couldn't be done. There's people that parked their cars there and I understand that it's a narrow street and the way it was built, people didn't have garages or driveways, so they do have to park on the street. But they have been allowed to park boats there for several years. It has not been moved. One car they jacked up to work on, for some reason it didn't get repaired and moved. It's still there at least two years now. And it, like I said, it's narrow, but weeds and, and limbs and things are allowed to grow up in the, you know, side of it. And it, it just, it's an eyesore. Lady that, a couple of years ago, her husband died and she wanted to move next to her daughter. She put her house up for sale on Sycamore Lane. And two people came out to East Second Street because that's the only way you can get to Sycamore. And when they got to her house, they said, I'm sorry, we, we can't, we're not going to buy your house. You know, I wouldn't want my friends coming out of East Second Street to see where I lived. So, you know, it, the value is our property. I'm just begging, if you have any pavement left, consider East Second Moore Street. And the next time, you know, you do have plans for repaving, please consider us. And I liked a lot of your ideas and I gave an input about that, that truck you were going to buy. I said, people that use that truck to call you, you should charge them to haul off a big load of stuff. And I don't know, I had several ideas and I'll get them to you the next time. Thank you very much.
Mickey, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you all.
May I carry?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, I just wanted to tell you that the reason this time, I don't know about previously, but the reason like Virginia Avenue is going to be paved, but not the side streets, because we can only use that V dot money on like V dot roads.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I am going to pass this along to our, our code enforcement officer in the past. I don't know if we have got it in this one, but they have worked on over 140 properties, keeping up with them, finding, repairing, doing what they got to do. So I'll make sure that they get this and it's taken seriously. They're doing a great job with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I?
Yes.
That street lots of times with all those parked there because like I said, other people and it's only one lane now, you know? And so.
Yes. Gary wants to make a comment. Go ahead, Gary.
Those vehicles and boats you was talking about, are they registered and tagged?
The, the tag, the tag on the car, I think it's even out of state and now it's got up to date tags. And the boat, I don't think the boat is either.
Was that against our ordinance?
And also, I don't know about the, the Virginia Forestry profits, got the logo on it. It hasn't been moved. And like I said, they said that man is a squatter there in that house, but the owner of that property is just two or three doors out. And so, and he hauled all those tires in there and dumped them.
Yeah, I understand that that street is narrow and anything that we can do to remove some of them vehicles and boats, if it's in our ordinance.
I would suggest, I'm glad you asked that, Gary. I would suggest Clarence, if you could convey this to the police department, the check on those vehicles, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments about Mickey? Mickey, thank you again. Okay. Ernest said, please remove him from this time of speaking. He'll be here next time. Barbara? Hi, Barbara.
My name is Barbara Cook and I live at 264 Plantation Drive in Richlands. And I had several notes going through my head. Some of them have already been discussed and discussed and discussed and I'm not going there now. It ain't worth it. A couple of things. I, I, well, CART is dear to my heart. When I started going to CART a couple of years ago, somebody gave me tickets for the first show and I thought, man, this would be a good thing to take the grandkids to. So for $100 a year, they get 10 professional performances that they wouldn't have an opportunity to see if it wasn't for CART bringing, bringing the shows in. And 90%, 95% of the shows are really good. There's one I didn't care for. But anyway, CART is mostly operated through funds, grants, donations. And I'm not just going to say CART, but there's other organizations like the Teen Venture that is run through grants and stuff like that. But anyway, when you remove the funding for things like that, a lot of it's in kind funding, in kind grants, and Ginger could tell you a whole lot more than I can. But you're, you're putting a stress on those, those organizations that help our community. And working in grants in the past through the school system, it was always easy to say, well, we live in an economically deprived area. We lived in a culturally deprived area and yada, yada, yada. And, you know, this all helped along with that. I know it's helped the grandkids a lot because just the, the experiences they've got to see and to go to a professional ballet in southwest Virginia, that's quite an accomplishment. But anyway, I don't know how to say this. You say, we have no money, the, the money tree has run dry. But then earlier in the meeting, you voted to delete the personal property tax. Now, I don't know how much money the personal property tax brought into the town of Richlands, but I think it was probably more than $5,000. And I just think sometimes when you're walking along, you can't see the trees for the forest. And sometimes I think we need to stop and remember, what is our vision for the town of Richlands? You know, what are our goals? Where do we want to be? Do we want to be somebody that says, we have no money? We can't do this, we can't do that. And then what's going to happen? We're not going to be a thriving town, but we're going to be a dead town. But just keep, keep visions in your head. What, what are your goals? Where do you want to be? And that's all I have to say. I'll accept 50 cents for a grapple truck a month. It'd be a whole lot better than my water sewer bill doubling, going up $50 instead of 50 cents. But keep your, keep your vision in your head.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you.
Could I say something?
Yes.
Barbara, we already matched the grant for CART.
I know that, but we think of that next year.
July 1st, you get the application.
Yes. Thank you, Barbara. Okay. Now, back on track. We're on Roman numeral nine. Attorney report. Okay. Town procurement. Ronnie? Or Mike?
Okay.
Sorry.
So we talked about this a little bit last month. I went through and went through some similar towns. Currently, Richlands has the $10,000 limit. So anything above 10,000 has got to be procured. Tazewell, somewhat of a similar town, is $30,000. Bluefield currently has in their town code, they just have it listed as current Virginia law. So technically they could go up to $200,000. I'm not saying that's a good recommendation, but I'm just saying it's a similar town that's in this situation. Marion has about 15,000 or has 15,000 before they have to procure. I couldn't find Grundy's, but I was just trying to find areas around here. I did not bring a draft of an ordinance because I wanted to see what your all's take was to where if you wanted to amend, that's totally on you. I just didn't want to have an ordinance ready to go without you all giving me an indication that that's what you want to do.
What is our current code? What did you say it was?
10,000.
10,000. Okay.
What brought this, what was this?
We actually had an issue come up about, I think it was with the police cars, getting rid of those, where it was going to be 22,000 or where it could have been over $10,000. They weren't able to just sell those. They had to go through the asking for bids because that was, they had to go through procurement to do that. They couldn't just say, okay, well, we've got an offer from somebody, let's sell it for over $10,000. Because once it gets to that 10,000, whether it's property or whether it's money, you have to go through those steps.
I think that needs to stay in place just like it is. The reason I do is because I could say, okay, we've got a police car, we want to sell my buddy over here, make some offer for just right over the amount or right over the amount and they sell it.
Well, they're, they're still ethical. I mean, you still are bound by the ethics under Virginia procurement under 2.2. So it's not going to be something as simple as that. I see what you're saying, but it's not going to be one of those situations that you can, that you could do that in a situation of selling a car. I mean, that's, I guess a little bit different. But that, that was the issue that was presented to us. That's why I couldn't just give the thumbs up to the police department of, you're good to go, you can do that. We had to go through that step.
I agree with Rick. Leave it alone.
I'm just one person, but I too would rather leave it alone.
Any other thoughts, council?
Is it impeding us in any, like, is it any detriment that we're not just being one to?
It could.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say that it is, but it's one of those situations where you're, you're kind of tying the staff's hands to where they have to present everything to you on, you know, we do have long meetings as it is. So it just adds on to the meetings when it's something that is 15,000, you know? If it's just right over that limit, you're still, hands are tied. It's got to go in front of council. Council's got to do this.
When was the last time we adjusted it? Like, have we adjusted that number for inflation?
No, I don't think so. I think the current.
That would be the only thing I would look at. Whatever, because I mean, we've doubled, so it might be at 20K. That's the only thing I would do, adjust for inflation.
1982.
I'd say, I'd say we could adjust for inflation. I don't think it needs to be 200 grand like the other one was. But if we, if we adjust that for inflation, I'm open to it. Not, I can go either way.
Other thoughts of council, Gary?
If we did adjust it, say, could you still request permission from council?
You can always do a tiered approach, like, let me make sure I've got the right one. Tazewell has a tiered approach of 3,000. They have to go through so many, you have to have like three different bids. So it's not one of those situations, you can just go up and find somebody, hey, can you give me nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for this to keep it under procurement? The amount, what I'm hearing from is there's three already, I know we're not taking a vote, but there's three that's, you know, not budgeting on that, you have to have four to pass an ordinance, so there's no real sense. It sounds like to me, there's no sense in me spending any more time on that.
Okay, next is town surplus property code.
Kinda what Rick said, surplus under the current code right now, you have to go through competitive sealed bids. We're looking at, I think, I know I have Blacksburgs, that they are saying that you can, I've got it somewhere, bear with me. Here it is. Right now, under the code, you have to go through competitive sealed bids. And you can, what we're thinking about doing is making it to where a public auction or an online auction or something like that, to cover that, instead of having to go out, advertise, say, you know, give us a sealed bid, we've gotta go through procurement here. If it's surplus property, like the police cars, what we're looking at doing is if we change the code, we could post that online, like you said, on gov.com, and set a public auction, advertise that there's an auction for this surplus property, and it'll make it a little bit easier of getting rid of that property, especially the street department, you can throw that stuff on there. And I don't know if any of that's worth putting on there, but I mean, that's something you could do to try to-
Does it facilitate the process?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that. What is the opinion of counsel? I'll start over here.
We need to do that one.
I agree.
I agree. Consensus? Okay, consensus, you guys good with this? Okay, let's, are we consensus to go for it, present a, an ordinance, okay? What else, Mike?
That's all I have.
Thank you, go ahead.
Kind of a segue into the town manager report, not to steal Clarence's thunder, but we just talked about this. I'm gonna reread this code section that I read at the last meeting, just to cover us a little bit farther. It's, you know, subject to 2.2-3712 of the Virginia code. The council is gonna have, the council is gonna form together for the purpose of interviewing potential town managers. It's gonna be in an undisclosed time, an undisclosed location. So just sometime within the next fifteen days, council will convene to do interviews. That's all I have on that.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you. Okay. Clarence, town manager report.
I cannot conceivably think of anything to discuss right now, Mr. Mayor.
The weather, all right, you ready? Council member reports, thank you sir, Count Laura.
An update on the flood study, it was a, we're what? Excuse me, fifteen months into a sixteen-month process. This is a flood remediation study, and they are almost ready to present their findings for us. Also, I just wanted to thank the town workers themselves. Mr. Monday helped when my UVA political leadership group was here in southwest Virginia last week. We visited Richlands for three days and everybody was just so welcoming. A lot of people talked about how nice everyone they encountered was. We got to even go in the coal mine to the long wall, which was the scariest thing I've ever done. Except the council meetings, this kind of rivals it a little bit. But thank you to everybody who participated and helped make them feel welcome here. Something I've noticed on our check registers is a cell phone allowance, I was wondering if you guys could check into that, of who is getting that, because it's kind of, and I'm not trying to stick Amanda on the spot here, but I have to communicate with Amanda as the clerk a lot, and I haven't seen her on there, so I feel like she's using her personal cell phone to communicate with the council quite a bit for clerk duties. So I'm just wondering, who has a cell phone allowance and should we amend that a little bit maybe? And also, I will ask that, I think there's, what do you call it, the embedded resolution about the three-minute, five-minute? I would like to see us just change public comment scheduled or unscheduled to just five minutes, everybody gets their five minutes and that way. I don't know if we can do that now, if we can do it in a motion, it's in an embedded resolution.
I have a suggestion on that. I understand where we're going with it, but if we could hold off just a little bit, deliberately think about it, there's some thought I think we need to think about. If you can do that. Set, establish the protocol. But if we could hold just for a little bit, it might be perhaps prudent. Go ahead.
That's it.
Thank you Laura. Jan?
I had a couple calls from Sayer Street, that's over near Iron, Jim Brown's. And the people were concerned because the ditch was getting filled with grass and they're worried about the rain, so. Said it hadn't been mowed, excuse me, mowed since July, so if you could check on that, I would appreciate it. And then, I've had a couple people talk about a tarp that's on the bank. If you look at the bridge that you walk across on Second Street, there's a big tarp playing down there on the bank. And it bothers people, obviously. But if you could have someone check that, I would appreciate it. And then, the, I don't know how to put this, except inconsistency, I guess, of reading of the meters, utility meters, because I had I don't know how many complaints because we were reading them on twenty-eight days and then we read them on thirty-four. And it caused people's bill to go up, so I had all sorts of complaints on that. So if we could, you know, I know it's difficult to do, but if we could be consistent when we read those, that would be helpful to people, because it did cost, I noticed mine increased about fifty bucks, so. And most of them told me it was like anywhere from twenty-five to fifty. And then, we have scheduled the Christmas parade for December the first at six o'clock. We were trying to get around Honacres and Tazewells. So we contacted them to find out when there's one, so we're doing it on a Friday. That's all I have.
Christmas parade.
Mayor Curry?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, I didn't realize Mr. West was still here, can I ask for one more thing?
Yes.
The Henderson Street, about the rumble strips. Okay, so are we gonna be able to put some down, is that what you're saying, or, okay. All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Jan? All right, next, Jordan.
Sure, sure. So, slew of things, the rec commission is looking for two members, if you're interested, let me know. We are also looking for a front desk attendant and a rec director, so if you're interested in that, reach out to me. Then, more fun things, I would like to give a big thank you to our community partners at Lowe's Home Improvement. They came in clutch and amazingly helped us with the molten fence over on the greenway, without them, it wouldn't have been possible. And I want to give a huge shout out to the street department for getting that put in faster than I thought possible. That, the only other thing I have is Thursday, September twenty-eighth, is a homecoming parade, I believe, and that'll take place in town. So be on the lookout for that, come support your seniors. That is all.
Thank you, Jordan. Let me ask you a quick question, Jo, I know Jordan, you're, I think, aren't you chairing the project graduation this year?
I am, I am.
So that's something, if you want to support, if supporting our local youth privately, you can step forward for that. Okay, Rick?
All the comments and concerns I've had, I pretty much forwarded to the street department and to, and I had one for Ron, I've done all that, so I don't need for you to-
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Okay, Gary?
I had a couple, but I think pretty much they've been fixed. George, I had a complaint on between Birmingham and Country Farms Road, a couple holes, did y'all take care of that, or is that VDOT? All right, well, thank you, it was, they called-
Well, that I told them.
Okay, and which we had another issue, but I think we got that lined out, didn't we?
Thank you, Gary. Doug?
I have a question. If you guys could look into it, we had a deal with the county that they would cover the cost of the trash trucks going to Tazewell instead of dumping at the station in Cedar Bluff. That was only supposed to last for three months. Covering the cost, they're paying eighty-five dollars a load, the county is, that doesn't even start to pay the cost. And that would barely pay the gas. And we need to work out something with the county, I guess, Mike, could you look into the agreement? There was an agreement with the county that, over that waste station at Cedar Bluff, that we could dump that. And I think the county is broken that, by not fixing, you know, paying the parts and fixing the dump at Cedar Bluff. So we need to, you know, look into the county's agreement that they made with us, because I'm not sure, Ronnie, how much you think it's costing us a month to take that trash with us?
I was guessing at the jewel, and it was coming in well over a few hundred dollars or something, I don't know about the maintenance, because it's mixed in with other maintenance, but just a cool one. But we, what we had, we had a document that was, the, it was their board meeting, like, in January of last year, where they approved the eighty-five dollars, and like, Tazewell's sharing half, and I think, there's enough, I don't know if it's Cedar Bluff or somebody, there's, it's being split, but Tazewell's getting the other forty-two fifty, so we're getting the full eighty-five. And then, there was a publication in the newspaper that Susan found talking about that same scenario, so I don't know what else, Laura, or you guys had on that.
Doug is right about this one, he, I've got the emails I can forward to you. At some point, I believe it was Doug and Seth brought this up, and they fought for us to true up on it, basically. And I've got the emails from the county that say that they will pay the time, the gas, the manpower. I'll forward that to you, but he's right about this.
So was that well after the January meeting, I guess?
Before, I believe.
It was, let me see here, hold on one second.
I think also Laura, they said it went on there last for like three months, that they would have to fix.
Then we could start dumping back at Cedar Bluff.
And if you look further back, here's an agreement, I would reiterate it, that the county agreed for us always to dump at Cedar Bluff. Do you remember anything about that?
I'll be honest with you, Doug, kind of.
If you look back at history, there is an agreement that they, that we had the right to dump at Cedar Bluff. And now they've taken that away by not providing the part to fix the dump station. So, and they promised again until last three months.
The emails that I have are from November, but he does say in the emails, he even gives mathematical figures that they are gonna pay our time. And I think what's going on with the station down there now is the, is, Mike, you might know more about it, but like, Republic won't let them, something, and they, I think they're going with a different direction than Republic, so I'm hoping that that's gonna be over. But like, the other day, Jan and I had a meeting with the street, you guys were there, and there were two flat tires, you know, we should be billing them for that, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but, I mean, if they're not gonna do it, then I say, take it to Cedar Bluff and let it be their problem, I mean, we're spending a lot of money going to that.
And we'll pass a truck with three workers and it headed for Cedar Bluff.
Or Bluefield.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, Bluefield, right. And the county needs to keep the word, you know, and you might have to check into that.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, also, I'm kind of disappointed in the forensic audit. We paid a hundred and some thousand dollars. And they should be here about every night, council is, for that kind of money, and asking questions and working with council. I can't see why they would update town hall and leave council completely out. I mean, that forensic audit depends on what information they're given. And it seems like to me, I mean, paying a hundred and some thousand dollars, council should be involved someplace, you know?
He did tell us that he would come back anytime we want, so maybe we could ask him, if you want him here at the meetings, I'm sure we could ask.
I mean, when Ronnie spoke, they'd already summarized, oh, there's nothing wrong with the thing, I mean-
That was just a conversation Clarence and I had with him, it wasn't-
Well, I'm not telling, I'm just saying, I don't think they've done the job, you know? I mean, for a hundred and some thousand dollars, I'd be here if, you know, if the council meeting given up that council who ordered it, not town hall. You know, and I'm just, I'm just really disappointed.
Doug, I think that's, your point's well taken, and Laura's is too, I think what we need to do is, or the council needs to do, as well as myself, is ask for a report at the October meeting. Can we request that? Thank you. What else, Doug?
Just to say, I mean, the MS- Just to say, I mean, the EMS, I mean, they need to make, they're a great organization, just like our police force. But, and they should make what Tasewall makes, what all the surrounding towns do. And I would hope that we can get a scale and provide what Tasewall pays, what Letham pays, what the other towns pay, and make sure that the workers get what surrounding areas do. And yet, at some time or the other, we're going to have to watch and take, I mean, each, I liked it when each department came to each meeting and they told us what they had done each, that month, and reported to council. And like I said a few minutes ago, last year, we paid seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven hours of overtime. Next, this year, we're going to be paying ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-three. We're going up three thousand a year, overtime. You can't do that forever. You've got to make some policies, make sure each department watches their overtime. I mean, trick them employees great, of course, but you've got to be over them. And they just don't run any time. And do overtime. You've got to have some kind of control. And we don't have any control at all, and it keeps getting worse each year. And I'm the only one going to speak out because everybody else is, they want, nobody's going to speak out. They don't want the hassle. But I will speak out, and we need a policy on overtime. And we need to, not every year, go up three, four thousand more hours, because eventually you're not, you don't live to pay it.
Can I ask a question concerning that? Do these departments send you a report about what the overtime is for for that week?
A report is filed, of course, with their time sheet when payroll was processed. And, you know, we've been able to examine the overtime on a very limited time. You've got to think about it. It's pretty dynamic, the type of follow-up that we have. We get a lot of questions, but we don't really have time to delve into the issue because we've got a lot thrown at us. But what I know about the overtime may surprise you. And I'm going to go ahead and say it because the assumption is put out there. There's a thing called the Department of Labor, and they have overtime laws that we have to follow. And the particular work cycle that EMS works, they have to staff the trucks. So they've got two choices. They can cut back the number of personnel they have on the truck. They can furlough people and shut a medic unit down, or they can provide the service. So my understanding has been that the overtime comes in two forms. One is scheduled overtime, so they don't have to furlough a medic unit and take it out of service. The other reason is calls come in sometimes at the end of a shift. So if their get off duty time is 6:00 a.m., a call comes in at 5:45, you're going to have overtime, and there's no way to avoid it. Now, what the trends are, I have no idea. I've been here for three months. Now, we can do a work session, have the people in here to answer the questions. But I just ask that if you want to discuss it, get the people here to answer the questions and let us have time to have them here so accurate information is put out.
Well, no, the reason I asked that question, Ron told me in overtime that in each week that he sent, you know, with time sheets and overtime was for.
I think that's a great idea because I've, I've been a big supporter of getting rid of the unnecessary overtime. But just like with the, the street department, you'll see a little bit of overtime on there. But it was either let our people have a little bit of overtime and pay four hundred dollars in overtime, or pay eight thousand to let somebody else do the job. Or if a water line breaks or something, I mean, what are we supposed to do? Just say, sorry, forty, forty hours are over. Let it, let it leak for another two days. I mean, it's, yeah. So I, I mean, I think that's a great idea to get some, get some accurate information.
Logically, you're going to have to have overtime, but you've got to have limits. And we don't have any limits.
Okay. Anything else, Doug? Thank you, members of council, for your reports, mayor's comments. First, when Mr. Brown was on, obviously he has done an excellent report, but I found it very difficult to follow. That's just me. And I think I could sense maybe other members of council did. And we want him back at the next meeting, I think. But I'm thinking if we might have a work session and he's able to come via Zoom, and it's just a work session, so we're not involved in such, all the other details of the town, and just concentrate on that. That's the only thing on the agenda. I, I suggest to council that we do this. Council's input, please.
You know, it's a big decision, what we're going to have to make on the water and sewer and stuff. So I would encourage us to have a work session.
I would, I need consensus, please.
I need to get a yes.
Jordan?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Can we schedule that now? Can we do that? And, or should we ask him if he's, his availability?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest while you're all here together, if you tell us the dates that you are not available, and then we'll fill that in with his availability.
Okay. I'll just depend on others to share their time. For me, the next two weeks are very difficult. So it's going to be the last week of September. That's for me. But I, I can move it around if need be. I'm thinking in the evening. Doug, do you know your availability at this time, or are you not sure?
I'll be gone in like seven days.
Okay.
And then I'll be gone the twenty-fifth, well, twenty-fourth, well, twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I'm into October as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Let's see here. I, I'll just, let's see, I'm trying to check here. What, I'll just put these out here. What about October the second? It's a Monday? I'm, I'm getting pretty full here. Your thoughts, council? It's a Monday, October the second?
I think I'm good.
Everyone else, are you okay with that, Rick?
Yeah, I can do it as well.
I'm going to suggest this to, in the interest, expediency of interest of time and energy, that we start at five o'clock. If we can, or what, at six, but not go more than two hours. Because those numbers will flood around in my head, and I won't be able to digest it. Thank you. So when would you like to start, council?
Five is fine.
Or six?
I can't think of five.
All right, that's good for you, Rick.
It doesn't matter.
Six is better.
Let's do six, then.
Five, six, seven.
Let's say six o'clock, two hours. Is council in agreement with that?
Absolutely, two hours.
Limited, because beyond that, it's very hard, I think, to digest all that. So if you can contact Carl, we would appreciate that. And see if he's available on October the second, is that what I said? Which is a Monday at six o'clock via Zoom.
So six, six to eight, six to eight p.m.?
And I say no more than two hours, because after a while, it just, we repeat, I repeat a lot. Let's put this on there.
Do we want to try to formulate questions in anticipation of that meeting?
I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay.
How should we submit those?
Funnel them all through me?
So we don't have repetitive questions?
Yeah.
Can we email the acquainted questions to Carl? And Ronnie, what's your suggestion, Ronnie?
I, why don't you funnel them through me? Because I've been working directly with Carl, and that way we, I can help monitor the responses.
That's perfect.
If that works for you.
Is council okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that is Monday, October the second, and that's going to be at 6:00 p.m.?
Well, we have to confirm with him.
Yeah. Based on his availability. I put that in my calendar. Clarence, you okay with that? And everyone else? Gentlemen, ladies? Okay. And you just send an email if that works. All right, then, thank you so much. And then the next thing, Jan had mentioned this about questions about their bills, and it was addressed earlier, and I want to say thanks to the staff. The questions I have received are, did, why, why am I not saving money? And so you answered it, because of the billing cycle. Actually, October's bill will reflect the new rate in September. That's going on right now. Is that correct? Thank you. I'll be able to share that, so I can say as best I can, here's what's happening. And then the next thing, there's a ton of things. I'm so glad we have a Christmas parade scheduled. There's a lot of positive things going on. And I want to say that is what really is a cool thing and makes people tick. And Laura mentioned the Sorenson Group, and I just want to share. She had contacted me and asked if the section house would be available. And so it was available, but the group couldn't get there. But I did meet one of the members, I don't recall his name, Peter, somebody. He came and he was very impressed and impressed with the town. And then I also was invited as the mayor of Richlands. I was very honored to have dinner with them. I paid for my own dinner, she'll notice, okay? Money. I paid for it. My dinner. So it was a pleasure to meet these people, and they're very diverse in their lifestyles and in their political affiliations and beliefs. But I found it enlightening, and I want to thank you very much for inviting me in this group. They were very cordial to me and to this town, and they have very positive things to say. So I just want to share that. And I have other things, but it can wait. I have contacted members, our staff, with other concerns I've had, and they've been addressed. Thank you. Okay. We have an executive session. We was asked to be put on here, personnel 2.2-3711A1.
And Mayor, a quick thing Ms. Malo mentioned to you. Can you give a general overview of personnel of what?
Yeah, you can do now.
Yeah.
Town manager and town attorney.
Okay.
Okay, so it's to discuss town manager and town attorney. Okay, so is there a motion to go into executive session 2.2-3711A1?
So moved.
Laura makes the motion. Is there a second? Jan makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Doug? Gary? Rick? Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. We will go into the side room here, and we'll be out shortly. Thank you. Thank you. Jen makes the motion and there's a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote please. Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to certify that nothing was discussed other than personnel 2.2-3711A1? And so voting, you are certifying that nothing was discussed other than this particular code. Is there a motion for that?
Personnel and to break it down, town manager and town attorney.
Town manager, town attorney. Thank you. Gary makes the motion. Rick makes a second. Any discussion? Thank you. Vote.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
This motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, to close the meeting. We're adjourning.
I want to discuss it. We've got the most moral resident.
Before we go, we're going to carry it. Morgan, approach the bench.
Just broke that.
I want one question. Come here.
I'm coming.
Teacher Curry's up here. He was my student. Morgan, where did you learn about the Moral Courage Project?
Richland High School, under you.